All right, that'd be five gold, one and a half.
Yes. We've gone digital.
Oh, no, not on this.
Or a fraction.
Don't tell me that, I'm not on this thing. We'll open the meeting. And what would you like to start with? Jim, big guy.
So really, I am just checking in. I have a... counting particularly in Election Day if there's any interesting stuff. I remember last time I was here, I scribbled a note about two warrant articles that had to get switched.
Yep.
Thirteen and fifteen?
Uh, yes. I believe, yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so fifteen, then fourteen, then thirteen.
I think you could just...
Or just move fifteen.
I would say as of, just when you start the meeting, just say we're gonna take Article fourteen, or I'm sorry, fifteen before thirteen.
Okay, so just move fifteen.
Just move fifteen to the front of the... You can leave the numbers the same, just move it to the front of the, of the...
The front of the...
Yeah, I guess I had to do something like that last year. See the minutes? Many people are used to it. All right, great. So fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, thirteen. Any, um... I don't know, I mean, I'm gonna be going to you guys for each thing to see who wants to speak to it. But any unusual thing that I need to call upon? I'm gonna ask the Assembly to approve the out-of-towners to speak ahead of time. So we cover all our bases there. Nothing?
No.
Okay.
Okay. That's the kind of meeting I wanna have.
Oh, it will be that fifty dollar, don't you?
Yeah.
Well, there's no more fifty dollar bike trucks.
No, no, no.
Can't find one.
It was fluorescent lights last night.
Well, let's see what it is this time. All I know is I will, once again, make it into the minutes because now I kinda have to. Let's see, Election Day, um, do you know when we're gonna be set up? When the guys agree?
Uh, the...
It's usually early if it's in the town hall office.
Yeah, um, the private farmer will set up over there on the day before, on Monday.
Oh, okay.
So that should be off.
But you know if it's gonna be morning or...
I think they, they usually come in the morning, so it's ready by lunchtime.
Great.
Yeah.
So just like last year.
Yeah.
Because we'll do our postings and walk-through like mid-afternoon, so. All right, and, uh, yes, I've already spoken to the planning board that was asking if they could have, uh, you know, somebody haul away in there. And I said, no, that's beyond the info that's been sent out as here in the warrant articles. Then you can tell people to come here if they wanna talk to somebody. But otherwise, you can be outside if you want in the electioneering zone. And I'm sure there'll be plenty of people there keeping them company. And it won't be such a bad thing.
No, it doesn't.
In the forties, it seemed to be, yeah.
It's part of the blessing.
Yeah, we'll take that. No plowing. Anything for me?
See you then.
Yeah.
Yeah, see you then.
Have a good time till then. Don't worry about it.
It's a six AM arrival.
I know. You get to spend the whole day there, they'll think of it.
Well, that's true, though. I get to spend the whole day with, with the nicest people. Always some of the nicest people. Other nicest people come in and vote and go on their way. All right, there you go.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
What have we got in the...
Well, we've got, well, we've got every kind of signs. Appointments here and then...
Yeah, so why don't we... Makes sense to me.
Ladies?
So do we need to go into executive session, use room forties? We're gonna be discussing personnel later?
It could cross over.
I think it's over.
It's up to you guys, I...
Yeah.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, good.
I was gonna say Happy Friday, don't you wish it's Friday?
Wishful thinking.
Who waits for them?
Right. All right, I think we've just gotta wait for Cal to get us on the air. Edgar, you're, you're good?
Is there somebody out there on the air or hang up?
There was, there was, yeah.
This conference will now be recorded.
Accidentally ended the session for everybody instead of just leaving, so hopefully they come back. I... I know everybody loves Edgar's radio, so, you know.
That's something I would do, Cal, don't do that.
So I'm here with just a few updates and keep you in the loop on a few things. All right. One is, we have talked a couple times about the need for Trails Committee in town. And, um, we've talked about the possibility of them reporting to the Board of Selectment. And you've indicated that that is not your preference of having another committee report directly to you. Am I correct in that interpretation?
I haven't spoken to it, but...
Oh, okay.
I don't know, do we need a... Somebody in like us to be in between what they're talking about at that level or Trails?
Well, you're kinda sorta in charge of the land? Sorta, kind of?
I don't, well, I'm open to suggestions here, I'm...
You're speaking to a conservation, you mean a conservation commission?
Yeah.
Um, I guess that's one way to look at it. So, uh, um, we thought about whether it should be a subcommittee of the Conservation Commission. Or another town has, um, that we know has not made it a formal town committee so that it doesn't have to have formal notarized meetings, it doesn't have to keep minutes and all of that. But then, I, I think part of what might be needed here is some coordination and, and not having a completely independent Trails entity in town. So the Conservation Committee was thinking of inviting some people that we know who are gung ho about Trails, involved with Trails in different ways, to see if they would form a committee. And we're thinking of the committee as being like a steering committee. So this isn't the people who are necessarily gonna get the shuttles and the clippers and go out and maintain Trails, but people who could think a little bit about coordinating in terms of communicating with, with people in the community. Maybe prioritizing which Trails need maintenance. Raising issues that they think need some kind of a decision. They could bring those to the Conservation Commission. We could deliberate, come to you all if we needed to. So that's, that's the loose concept we have in mind. And I'm here to invite your thoughts on that.
So what Trails would you adopt? Or how would you decide which Trails are something the town's gonna put its stamp on somehow?
Well, um, I don't think the town... Uh, this, all right, there's, there's maybe a couple answers to that. So I would suggest that, that if we do this, then we encourage the Trails Committee to think first about which Trails are on property that is owned by the town. And make those the priority for making sure that they're maintained, that the signage is good, that people know where they should park when they're gonna go out there, right? And then, as a second tier, they could think about Trails that are on private land. And that's where we get into the landowner interface. It's not up to us to just go, you know, no, none of us gets to just go make a Trail. So if there is already an established Trail on private land, I would think then we ask the committee, this is why I think of it as more of a administrative committee and not a tools and trail work committee, to get in touch with the landowner and find out if it's okay, you know, if they would like towns, or not town, but if they would like Trails Committee assistance in maintaining the Trail. Make sure that they are, the landowners comfortable with people being on the Trail. One of the concerns I have always about Trails is that, um, how they get publicized, where they get publicized, so that we're not creating a rush of people going to a Trail that is not well enough maintained to handle it, is maybe on private property and the owners don't welcome the Trail use. So there are things that need to be, that's what I want the committee to think about. It's like the Conservation Commission can never get around to this level of, of detail about the Trails.
So I have a Trail, as you may or may not know. And the challenge always is in indicating to people what the degree of difficulty is on it. Because, you know, it doesn't feel difficult to me.
Yeah.
But as I get older, it's becoming much more difficult. And I think then you start getting into liability, I would think, as to, if you say that this Trail is acceptable to beginners and somebody finds it hard and gets hurt, do we have to answer for that as a town?
Good question. Two things, uh, three things maybe on that. One is that I think there are actually standards that, like from the American Hiking Society or some such, that define... So it would be about total elevation gain over how much mileage equals how difficult a Trail. So I think that to some extent that could be, there are standards that could be adopted. Two, we also don't have to say, right? We can just say it is a three mile Trail with a eight hundred foot elevation gain and there are rocks and roots, and let people decide for themselves. And, but the third and most important thing is that a landowner who allows public use of their land for recreation, non-paid, so free recreation purposes, is covered by the state's, can't be held liable if somebody writes themselves on that Trail. The law being what it is, I'm sure somebody could still sue, but it, I think, as I understand it, the case should quickly be thrown out because if there was no charge for the access to the land, then the landowner is covered by the state law, and I forget exactly what that's called.
So I, when I look at what Trails can I walk, I go and I pick up the little booklet that Ginny and whoever else put together. And it gives me some indication of those various things. Would the town be responsible for using that as maybe a guide to Trails in Canterbury? Or would they set up their own booklet that...
I don't see publicity. This is maybe me, me talking more than the Conservation Commission. But I think those things need to be figured out. Like when, when that project was underway, as I understand it, I wasn't involved in it, but then it was, they were some ways into it before they maybe realized the full distinction between a Trail that's on private property and a Trail that's on town property. And that you can't just publicize a Trail on private property without landowner permission. So they had to go and, and they did, as I understand it, ask all the landowners and people, say yes or no. So I think, who knows? I mean, that could evolve a number of ways. Maybe it's that, maybe the town helps to perpetuate that. I don't know how they paid for it to begin with, so whether it was private, well, obviously it was private. But that's a question. I mean, and also in today's age, is it, do you just put stuff on websites? So people can have it on their phone. At the same time, the more it is, um, the wider, more widely it's easily accessed, the more people will come. And that's a concern I have. I mean, it's always the problem we had with the Riverland when somebody said on Facebook it was a great place to party, right? That was the beginning of the troubles of the Riverland.
Yep.
So there are a lot of issues here. And there are issues also about, um, you know, we used to have a fabulous snowmobile network, but land has changed hands, pieces of that Trail system have been lost. You don't have snow anymore, so maybe it doesn't matter. But, uh, you know, if we, if we have that, whether it's that Trail network or some other larger Trail network, maybe for walking, that we ever want to have, that would require getting some, you know, standardized agreements with the landowner, saying, yes, you have permission to, you know, publicize, like, your Trail can cross this land, et cetera. But these are things I think the committee needs to work on. And, um, I, I, I kinda think starting small, like, there are a lot of problems to solve and I think that will just be frustrating. So maybe starting small by saying, prioritize Trails that are on town-owned land. Create a volunteer Trail Committee. Organize the workdays to make sure that those Trails are cleared and well-signed. And then make sure that whatever is, information is publicly available about those Trails, and we could put it on the town website, or it could stay in the Trail booklet or its future iterations of it. You know, describe the Trail and where to park, remind people to be respectful of private land, et cetera. I, you know, if we started with that and that started to happen, I think that would be great. I mean, I know that there is some trail work that happens in town, but I think it's very ad hoc. I think people get gung ho about the Trail that's near their house or whatever. And it's hard to sustain, um, you know. There, people make a big effort and maybe they clear a Trail that's become a bit defunct. But then, you know, six months later, you gotta get back out there and flip it again, or it's gonna be overgrown again. So.
So should I not keep talking? So as an older man, I'm realizing that there is an end to this existence. And I'm wondering who's gonna take over the maintenance of my Trail system? Because we put hours into that thing.
Yeah, it's beautiful Trail system.
And I don't know how to set it up so that somebody will take care of the fallen tree, right? And I don't know if, if I join this, or put this into your group, will there be somebody that comes and does those kind of things? That's, that's what I'm not sure of.
Yeah, well, I think that's the kind of thing that maybe we could work up too. Because if we have a landowner like you with an established and well-built Trail system, who is happy to have it publicized as being available to people, and you're happy to have a volunteer crew come and clip it for you, do the drainage, whatever, to keep it well-maintained, that's great as long as you're the landowner. If Deja ever come to pass when you're no longer the landowner, then what happens next is up to the next landowner. And if that person probably would be attracted to it because they do love the Trail system that's there, et cetera, and would like to maintain it, we can tell them, we have a Trail Crew, this has been public, you know, the public has been welcome here. If you wanna continue that, we're happy to help continue to maintain the Trail for you. If they don't wanna continue public access, then there's no need to make, to bring town volunteers to work on the Trail.
So I look at Shaker Village and they have a fair number of Trails that they're using. They've been using the stewards program volunteers to maintain it. If we suck them back into the town, all of a sudden Shaker Village isn't gonna have that source of labor that they've been getting for a while. I think those kind of things need to be figured out.
And when you say stewards program, I feel like you were perhaps referring to the thing they call nature groupies now, or which...
No, there was a stewards program, it was run by Mary Tebow, I believe, for Amish. And it's been going at the villages for a while, I'm not sure how long. My wife, I think a lot of people in town have actually done the stewards program. And they go out and they clear the sides of the Trail and push everything back.
So it's Shaker Village's own program?
Yeah, yes. But I, I'm thinking it's, it's, Mary Tebow apparently is gonna move it to somewhere else, which means you're gonna lose that stock of volunteers that the village has been relying on.
I don't know enough about it. If there were a town volunteer maintenance crew that got put together, I mean, that's why I'd like a steering committee type group to say, okay, of all the Trails in town, maybe, maybe the most important thing is to help maintain the Trails at Shaker Village. Because it is guaranteeing public access. There's parking, there are facilities, there's, you know, there's other things to do there. So if they think that's the most important thing, and when I say they, I'm thinking of people whose like gung ho volunteer interest is Trails. They wanna build them, maintain them, and be out on them all the time. So, and I defer to them. If they as a group think that Shaker Village is the highest, you know, most important set of Trails to maintain, then they can direct Trail volunteer energy there. If they think that Skudrick is the most important place, they can go there. If they think collaborating with private landowners like yourself, who have a nice Trail network, but maybe can't maintain it all the time by themselves, they can go there. But I, like, those are decisions, I feel like, I'm not the person, I don't, I'm not sure that the Conservation Commission, as it's, you know, composed right now, is the right set, be able to choose those, make those decisions.
It almost sounded like we're gonna have to be involved in it, I think. I don't think you can just let it go and hope it takes care of itself, but...
Yeah, makes sense to me.
So does that mean you'd like a Trails Committee to report directly to you? Or be a subcommittee of the Conservation Commission?
Or, I mean, we have members on the boards, different boards when they're meeting, right? I know we, I don't, anybody been attending Conservation? I will take that on.
You're officially listed as our person.
Am I? Oh, I'm sorry.
But that's okay.
So, uh, so, but hopefully that changes next year. We're gonna have a new board member, we'll have more people that are hopefully interested in doing that part of it. So maybe that's all we need, is just somebody on that board watching and seeing if you need help or...
Well, so here's the thing, I would like, I wanna make sure that the Trails, the set of Trails, everything related to Trails does not become the dominant thing that happens at a Conservation Commission. We have a lot of other stuff to do. So I really think it has to be either a subcommittee of the, of the Conservation Commission, in which case they would say when they're gonna meet. And ideally, one of us would also be a member, or they, one of them would be on our commission and would be the communication liaison. And, uh, so it's either that, or they're standalone group and they report directly to you.
Now, I like the fact that we've got so much public knowledge about all the different committees because we're, I've kinda pushed them to get their minutes in on time, right? And don't take no for an answer. We're about to lose our main note taker here. And I don't know how we replace her. I, I've looked at various things, but I don't have a solution for that at all yet. So, you know, do we hire another person like Lois? I, I don't know what to say about that. I had suggested at one point, they, they make machines that'll actually listen to conversation and make notes out of it. I'm getting a note from this one, but...
No, please no.
But, okay, that's another topic, I think.
Yeah, another one.
I, so, and I don't need an answer tonight. I'm bringing you this, this is where the Conservation Commission has come to the conclusion that, I thought we had heard pretty clearly that the Board of Selectment didn't want the Trails Committee reporting directly to them. But if that's not the case, that's okay. But we just need to figure out which way so that we can invite that group to start to form. We can, the Conservation Commission would be happy to recommend members to be in that initial group, whether it's our subcommittee or your, or a new committee for you.
Kent, why don't we do this, since we have a new member that will be joining us? Why don't we table it till then? And allow the new person to weigh in.
You only got a couple weeks to weigh in.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, can the old lady say something?
What?
The veteran, um, member of the, of the Board of Select People, please. What about a subcommittee? They could work with no better people than the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, I think that's, that's definitely an option. And I, I think it has mostly to do with the preference of, of you as a board. Do you want Trails to be an entity that comes directly to you or to go through the Conservation Commission?
But that's something to be guys to think about. No one is gonna be sitting over there if it's one of you guys coming to sit.
All right.
All right, that's number one. I have four.
What?
Sorry, I, I didn't realize we were getting quite that much conversation. I think, I think the next one is a quick one. As you know, we've been looking at stuff at the Riverland. There are two issues down there. One is signage. There's a lot of different signs, but somewhat conflicting messages. We're making it a priority to think about how to clean that up. We're drafting language, and when we have that, we'll circulate it to everybody who needs to see it, including the police department. Um, we'd like to propose that the dates of the, um, when it's open are November fifteenth, or rather, May fifteenth through November fifteenth. The parking lot has, parking lot needs to be closed when it's super wet down there, or when there's snow, because we're not gonna maintain it. But it seems like May fifteenth to November fifteenth is, yes, there could be an early November snowstorm, but it's usually a one-day thing and we just don't unlock the gate that day. So the, um...
Can I just speak to that? So one of the other reasons, one of the reasons that it was closed from, um, Columbus State Memorial Day, we have found that the, the lack of activity down there, I don't wanna say encouraged, but allowed.
Great smell for change.
And it seemed the more, the more activity there was down there, the less illegal dumping and other things that went on down there.
Right.
So the Selectment at the time felt that, that, uh, that was one of the reasons to shorten the open, uh,
Yeah.
or not extend the closed.
Right. Yeah, no, that, that, we're aware of that and concerned about that also. And so if we, if, if the...
You know, I, it's one of those things, if you open it for a month and longer each end, it works out fine. If it doesn't, then go back and change things back.
Right.
I just wanted to explain that, why that was, in, in addition to the snow and the water.
Yeah, no, I know dumping's an issue down there, so I've helped clean it up before. And then related, we've had concerns from some of the abutters about hunting on the property. It's a little conflicting because the sign that's down on the property does say no hunting, but the property is not posted against hunting and therefore... I think the Conservation Commission has talked about this a bit. And we're thinking that, uh, the ideal, if we can do it, is to, uh, mark the very public areas. So the road and the parking lot and the right-of-way down to the beach and the beach area, that whole space with the safety signs to indicate, which should indicate to hunters that this is not a place they wanna be hunting. Um, I'm gonna talk to Fish and Game about that because you actually have to apply to get into a certain program to get the signage. And I need to find out, um, how complicated that is caused, if they have any concerns, et cetera. I have checked the easement and we, we can post against hunting. It does get a little confusing in my head because there's the private land that we have rights of way over and there's town-owned land. And I would think that the private land we have rights of way over should be posted by the abutters. But in reality, if we're gonna do this, I think we have to do it together. So, um, I was also planning to try and talk to, certainly not a full canvas, but to a few active hunters in town to get their opinion on what kind of feedback the hunting community might have. I feel like there is a good deal of conservation land that's more remote and less used by the public that is more appropriate place to, you know, allow the hunting to continue to go on. And that taking out this relatively small portion wouldn't be a big setback for hunters, but I'm a hunter, so I wanna talk to some of them to find out.
How much bigger is the land that people are using for swimming or whatever is going partying and whatever's going down there? Is that compared to the whole area? Is there a lot of land outside of that little core or...
There's quite a bit that extends, um, it's hard to do directions on the river. That extends, so, you know, when you're in the parking lot, you can walk to the beach or you can head off toward, um, into the woods where we have had in the past a nature walk, which is now dilapidated and in the wrong places and needs to be fixed. But, um, there's a big swath of woods along the river that is, there's no, yeah. There's, I think you'd actually do better coming into it from the road than from the parking lot. But, um, there's considerable property there that's not beach area.
And people are using that for hunting?
I don't know. I've never encountered the hunters myself. I don't know where, you know, they could be sitting in a, in a tree or wherever, I don't... I assume they're down there for waterfowl primarily, but I don't know. So I just wanna talk to some hunters. But this is mostly just to let you know that complaints have issued, concerns have been raised to us. We've been talking about it and trying to figure out a way to, um, because it's a bit un, physically unrealistic to think about doing the signs over fifty feet to officially make it, um, you know, to put up the no-hunting signs. So the safety zone may be the compromised way to go.
I've walked up the power line now.
We have an appointment at six thirty that we have to be at. So I just wanna keep you guys moving along.
If you walk up the power lines now, it's a nice Trail up through the, all the way. And this Fish and Game has posted it from West Road all the way up to the top of there, where they don't want you walking. There are a slug of signs to do that. Of course, they went all the way down to the Highway Department and they posted all the way along the road, so...
Yeah, that's, that's a way to do it. Yep, that's the, the way to do it properly.
Yeah.
Which is a bit of an impediment. Um, my last issue is I wanted to give you an update on our potential conservation project. But this has to do with negotiations with the landowners, so I prefer to not have it... I wanna talk about money, but I don't want it to be in the minutes. Is there, is that possible?
It, it, I guess, is it, is it, um, because of potential, potential contract issue that...
Yeah.
Then we can close, close the meeting for that.
Okay. You mean contract in the sense, it wouldn't be a contract with the town, but like...
Correct, but, yeah.
Yeah, ultimately a...
Yeah, we don't, you can close the meeting to, to discuss potential contract.
Okay.
Would you like to do the...
I would like to do that.
Do we have to make a motion?
Yep. You gotta sign paperwork, and then there is a few other things that have to be done.
Yeah, okay. Is there anything you can discuss with us?
Contact the fire chief and let him know we're gonna be a little late.
Yeah, we won't take us long. Uh, we're going to sign a manifest, a accounts payable manifest in the amount of four hundred fifty-three thousand, four hundred twenty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Shall I move to second?
Using my best penmanship, it's the best you're gonna get, right? Uh, payroll manifest in the amount of fifty-six thousand, six dollars and fifty-three cents.
Shall I move to second? Thank you, sir.
And then we have land use change warrant in the amount of, do we have to do a, no.
Uh, I don't think so.
No, I'm just gonna...
What is that?
Land use change tax.
No, 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 wait a minute.
That's outgoing?
Pardon me?
That's outgoing?
That's gonna be paid by someone who has changed dues.
Oh, I see.
It's change.
Got it, there we go.
I was gonna get you up to eighty-nine thousand.
Thank you, yeah.
Stop building it back up.
I thought you were paying bills, sorry.
If we raise enough money to get you some real stickers.
Oh, man, excuse for using them.
I know, that's...
Oh, there you go. Thrifty.
Right.
I can probably stop. Because I usually fall off, huh?
It's worn out.
Yeah.
That one's lost its stick.
Oh, the, the pointy end's still good.
And then we have, how much is it? Eighteen seventy-five for land use change tax.
Shall I move?
We don't have to...
No, we don't have to, you know, make a motion about it.
I've looked at the minutes, have you guys seen?
Yes.
I need for someone to step with that, John. Uh...
Make a motion to accept the amendment.
Okay, yeah, so, um...
I'll second.
Not right now, yeah, I need to make sure.
We're in a rush, we gotta go see our fire.
Yes.
Minutes, wait a minute.
We, we approved the minutes just now.
Did you, well, did you approve both of them and...
No, just the regular ones.
Okay, you, you all need to look at the executive session points, too.
Yeah.
There's only one copy of it, and it's...
Okay, one copy, very good.
Sorry I interrupted. Bye, thank you.
Thank you.
Night, Nigger. I'm assuming you followed the pattern of Kent moving and Scott seconding.
Yep, yep.
Don't break up a good team.
We're not gonna get something in writing on the, on the planning board complaint, I do believe.
Okay.
Just so you know.
All right.
Did you look at these?
Yes, yep.
Do I have to look at ones?
Yep.
Kent, I think you need to sign the front page of that one.
Did I read those two? And then we have a deed.
That's the deed for the, uh, property that you agreed to sell?
Yeah.
Yes.
Kent, is there the stipulation we talked about? Yeah, thank you.
Yep. Then we'll, the deed is, the deed stipulates the property was merged.
Yeah, very good.
Um, and that is some... I guess I'll wait for you to...
Okay.
Did you sign that one?
I don't know. I'm just gonna check your work since you're on this thing, so...
It must time out if we didn't do it.
Probably, but I do, though.
Actually, I need, I need to give you a chance to...
Two appointment slips.
All right, and this goes to Cal for notary after you've signed.
We have two, two appointment slips for the, uh, community car, is it?
Yep.
And one, the one for Howard Market, the other for Tim Need.
It's very flat, probably.
Good.
And then we have intent to cut. Should we, on this one, where there's...
Uh, you have to sign the intent to cut, why didn't you do that?
Oh, we do have to sign.
Yep, 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 yep. Yeah, there's really...
And we have this letter.
Yeah, I'll wait till they're done signing, I'll just talk about it real quick. Do you wanna show the letter to Scott?
Yeah.
Yep, this is the letter that...
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep. Do we need a motion, or can we just...
Well, I just, real quick, apparently, we get, uh, the trailer was parked on, on Old Schoolhouse Road, or the, the property owner asked if we, they could park it there, and you guys said no.
Yep.
Apparently, they parked it there anyway. So, I drafted a letter that you guys could sign, that's sent to the property owner.
Yeah, and you talked about it.
We did.
We talked about it, yes.
Hey, okay.
Okay, yes, uh, intent to cut.
That's the minutes.
Good, Cal. All right, do we need a motion on those?
Need a motion on the executive session.
So, I'll make a motion to accept the executive minute motion. Executive minutes, that's written, I think is what I wanna say.
Second.
Wait.
Hey.
Let me have her second.
Yeah, it's my time. He means it wasn't a...
I think I need to sing the song, but...
Did you, did you have it put on the agenda or chose to public?
Yeah, there were, did I not, did I not print the other public?
Oh, maybe, maybe they didn't.
It's just the short...
Oh, yeah, the tr- yes.
Yep, okay, yeah.
That is for your work session.
Oh, okay, it's, it's, yeah.
Okay, so we need a motion on this as well.
Need a motion on that one, also.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of February twenty-second work session.
Second.
I want to say it.
All right.
Um, are you ready for some new business?
Yes.
There's a letter in there complaining about, uh, election signs.
Okay. Um, the first page is the sign ordinance, and then the rest of it is what they mailed us. And they gave each of you a copy of the letter, they wrote your names on it, so...
Um, I take it, having read it, it, uh, it's a complaint about the, the, um, signs that are put out for elections, uh, candidates that are running for office. There... We have had signs removed because of, um, safety issues, where they're blocking the vision when people pull up.
Yep.
And that is a determination typically that's done either by the police or the road agent. Um, so that, that's kinda where that's always fallen. They work under your authority, but, but, um, we cannot remove, it's against the law to remove candidate signs that are private property. You can only determine whether it's on public property.
So, the triangle signs are on public...
Some of these are state right of way, so that's not your authority?
Yep.
Um, that would be the state to determine that, the state highway department to determine that. Um, you can only, we, town can only do under minister property, so...
I got a kick out of those, uh, budget blind signs sort of melding in with our candidate signs. I thought at first Mark Stevens, maybe he bought blinds and he put right out for his house, but then they're everywhere around.
Then you have a, a planning board complaint on here.
Uh, that's the next packet, which is, oh, not that packet, that, whom you can ignore, that's junk mail. Um, in the old business, that packet is five letters, um, I'm just...
Oh, oh, yes, confirm.
This is, this, these are people that are concerned about, um, the material that, they may be put on Lydon Road. The town received, along with the planning board and the property owner, the letter from DES saying that the, the, the material from the facility over the mountain that, uh, um, takes in contaminated dirt, treats it, and then sells it or gives away. The, the state has said that it is usable on roads, but we have several letters from the nearby residents that are concerned about it, so...
Yeah, I got, I got copies of these.
I don't know...
You sent me copies, so...
I'm not sure.
I mailed most of them.
Not sure what to do about this.
Not, not all of them.
Well...
It, it is the, it's the, the town has road specifications that, um, when, when a road is built, it does not talk about the material other than it has to be, the aggregate has to be a certain size, and it has to be, um, compacted and things like that. Our road agent has never run into this issue before, um, so I'm not sure how to proceed with it. I don't know if this is imminent and we need a decision tonight, but it is, you did receive certain letters from the concerned residents up there.
Are we getting these letters as addressed to the selectmen? Because I see them appearing in the Facebook too.
They're going, this letter's addressed to the selectmen and to the planning board.
I can get them on my phone, too.
So...
But they're all here for your reading purposes. And it'd be if we don't...
Again, I don't know that this, the, the planning board is not going to meet until the end of April on, the next, their next meeting is the end of April, to meet with the landowner to talk with them. So, I think this could probably be tabled for this, at this point.
Yeah, I think so.
And, and I'll, I'll do some more research and contact some different companies and try and, try and figure out.
Okay. I, so why do this a private road?
Correct.
Do we have the authority to weigh in on this?
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's...
I, I talked to the chairman of the planning board and the road agent today, and I think it would be best to contact town council and talk to them about this and see where to fall, where to fall on this.
Yeah, I'm just not sure that we have any business.
I, I don't know.
She said two of us.
I don't know that we are. I also have, uh, the property owner that just purchased property, insured for us, has asked about a, the cost of the lot across the street. And I said I didn't know what you guys wanted. I have the property card. Um, again, this, I don't, again, this isn't a urgent thing that we can probably put off for the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, and, and...
Um, and then the next one, I think you do, you do have to discuss and come with a consensus tonight is, um, you just signed an intent for cut-to-cut on Old Schoolhouse Road.
Yep.
Um, the, EverSource has given us a thirty thousand dollar bond for that road, because they want to continue hauling on it, even though the road was posted. So, I talked with John. We determined the cost for the new pavement, because we paved it the April a couple of years ago.
Yep.
Um, they gave us a bond three times the amount that we suggested. Now, the loggers, who just signed the intent to cut, wanna use that road. The road agent doesn't feel that that's a good idea while the road is posted, because if there's damage to the road, how, how is it gonna be determined who damages the road? And who we would go after for the damages?
Yep.
And he feels it's just, it would be opening a can of worms that we don't wanna get into.
Yep.
I kinda feel the same way.
Yeah.
I did talk to the property owner up there. I gave him my thoughts on it. Um, he still would like the logging, loggers to issue a bond, and I said I would talk to you guys tonight, like, you guys are the ones that make those decisions, so let you guys know what, what you wanted to do.
Well, I, I think even if the loggers, even if there's a bond from the loggers,
Yes.
we would still have the issue of who caused it.
And, and they, they did say that they would give us a bond, but, again, it falls into, how are we gonna determine if there's damages?
Right.
And then are we gonna get into the pointing of fingers, no, it was them, no, it was them? Certainly, EverSource is, is using the road a lot more than the loggers are.
Yep.
Um, I did send an email to EverSource and let them know what was going on. I have it, the, the Alex Green, the, the fellow that came and talked with us, was on the office today, so I have a great chat.
Yeah.
I, I think, again, this is one of those where, I, I think we're...
We should be opening a can of worms, so...
Yes, absolutely.
For me, it's a no.
It's a no for me.
Okay.
Same here.
All right, thank you. Um, that is all.
Thanks, Kent.
Yep.
It's bound, like, we meet at five.
A work session at the Sam Lake House?
Yep.
And before you close the meeting,
Cool.
I would just like to say, Cheryl, this is your last public meeting as a member of the...
Where's the body at?
And get the glow doo-doo up.
So, I would, I would like to say, and let the minister reflect this, thank you. It's been an honor to serve under you.
Thank you. It's more than a pleasure to be working with you since his birthday. The same thing as my dad, so I can read him like a book.
Well, I would echo what Kent said.
Thank you.
Thank you for your many years of service.
Thank you.
Should've done that earlier, and there were more people here.
No, those are the ones with the eggs.
All right.
All right, so we should adjourn?
Adjourned.
Mo, I'll make a motion to adjourn, if that's okay?
All right, Cheryl.